Call the meeting to order. This is a special meeting of the Yellow Springs School District Board. We're calling this meeting to address the issue on the agenda. And Jay, can you do a vote call?
Bailey?
Here.
Okay.
Here.
Magnus?
Here.
Potter?
Here.
We have a forum.
Okay. So, the first and only item for business is to review the resolution directing the superintendent to certify the district's compliance with federal anti-discrimination requirements. I want to give everyone a chance to look at this document. It has been under legal counsel review for several days now. There've been a lot of back and forth. The national conversation, I guess, events have been impacting this. State decisions and events, both in the legal side of things, as well as in the administrative side, have impacted this. So, take a moment. What you have in front of you is something that was recently edited or amended. There were, if you recall, the first draft version that came before the board, there were a series of whereas clauses that considered or addressed some of the content of the federal Dear Colleague letter. I spoke with our legal counsel and we agreed that there is no need for this resolution to acknowledge in any way any of the stipulations in that Dear Colleague letter. And so, we removed all of those stipulations. So, this is simply stating that we, as we have always been, subject to Title VI of the Civil Rights Act, and that we have consulted our legal counsel to review our programs, activities, and policies and administrative guidelines to ensure compliance with the district's federal anti-discrimination obligations, as we always have. And finally, that we are directing the superintendent, therefore taking on the responsibility for this decision, to execute the certification in compliance with the district's continuing anti-discrimination obligations and tender said certification to the DEW. Okay? So, that is, those are the conditions set up to propose directing the superintendent to execute certification. And then, please read Sections 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. You'll notice from an earlier draft, after consultation with the attorney, that an objection has been included. Section 2, to object to the aforementioned certification requirements as dictated by the federal and state governments. And the reasons for that objection are given. And also, Section 3, that we have already affirmed on many occasions, that we comply with Title VI and will continue to do so. And Section 4, that this resolution does not waive any rights of this board to enforce the certification or of the board's past, present, or continuing receipt of federal funds. The case that is cited in the certification being signed, SSFFA versus Harvard, has no standing when it comes to K through 12 schools and related legal requirements. And this, that we, as a board, will continue to follow Title VI as the law dictates and as we have interpreted that law. And finally, that this is an open meeting and we're having an open discussion. Okay, so, please just take some time to look that over. And then, I would like to have an open discussion since, according to Sunshine Laws, as you all know, we cannot deliberate and should not deliberate until we are all together. And so, we'll offer plenty of time to have an open deliberation.
Can I ask just a clarification about Section 4? So, I understand the second part that says that the case does not apply to K through 12, the case that was cited. Why do we need to reiterate that we're not waiving any rights? I guess I need to...
Do you want me to take that?
Go ahead.
My reading of that, after multiple discussions today, is that we are not waiving any rights, including the right that this board has, should it so desire, to litigate on our behalf any issues that arise from this.
So, if the state or federal government compel us to discriminate, we will litigate.
Okay. I'm glad, I'm glad to know that. I'm glad to hear that if the board certifies or directs the superintendent to certify, are standing regarding Title VI, then we are still keeping the door open to litigating for any overreach of the government in there. Okay, that's what Section 4 is about.
Excuse me, is there an extra?
Here, take this one.
Okay, so, just to make sure that I'm understanding, I'm just gonna repeat what I understand. Okay, so, we have been complying with Title VI all along. We, we are not, we don't have procedures or policies that allow us to discriminate, and we haven't been discriminating, and we're not discriminating now.
Correct.
So, certifying Title VI is just saying that we object to having, to, we object that we have to say that, but we're not discriminating against...
We object to this process.
To the process.
But, we confirm that we are following Title VI. Terry, you can talk about how often you've done this certification.
We have a, the system that we use, we call the CCIP. So, when we get our funding each year, our federal funding and our state funding, but our federal funding, we get CCIP, you know? We say, okay, the money's dropped. First stop is Donna. So, it's Title 1, it's Title 2, it's Title 4, it's IDEA. So, she allocates, there's a whole process. She has to allocate the budget. She does that, says, I'm finished with this, sends it to Jay electronically. As the fiscal officer, he reviews it, he approves it. Then, he sends it on through the system and it comes to me as the final signer. So, anytime I do that, I have a page-long list of things that I have to click certify. I click a box saying that I certify. Anytime I do anything, and anytime I do any approval in the CCIP. So, this is really duplicative of what we already do. It's overreach and it's duplicative. And I think that's part of what this resolution says. Do you have any questions?
So, has everyone had a chance to review it? It's actually shorter than the draft you got, so it should be fine. Okay, so, we can open up for discussion. I also want to, however, anticipate, after this discussion or maybe concomitant to it, I talked with our legal counsel with regards to a discussion of adding a section that would more clarify the board's concern that at least the language in the Dear Colleague letter could be seen as compelling a school district to violate their own mission, their own policies, and the Constitution. And so, he said, well, the best way to articulate where we stand in terms of anti-discrimination and viewing that the Dear Colleague letter proposes a path forward that will enable discrimination, that we make a statement to articulate that stand. And so, I would ask that we collectively come up with a statement to reflect how we jointly position ourselves in relation to that Dear Colleague letter so that we can move forward with clarity on what our next steps would be if a future directive from the, at any level of government was attempting to coerce our district to act against civil rights. So, that's part of our discussion today, too. Does that make sense, Terry? Okay. So, before us is an approval of this resolution. Does anyone have any thoughts? And I also want to give our community member a chance to... Wait, we can't?
It's not...
Because we didn't specify that we could have community comments. The meeting is a special meeting, correct?
Correct.
So, I'm just concerned that it's not an equitable access to input here.
Well, maybe to the, maybe when we discuss the statement the board wants to put out.
Jay, is there a way to...
Are, it's not on the agenda?
That community comments were...
And specifically, I think it's the line for special meetings. Like this is generally, there can be no community comments.
Okay, so...
I have a question, though. Are we expecting to come out of here with a statement? Or are we...
We don't have to. We can decide on...
So, then that gives us the opportunity to open the community members to write to us about this?
I just, and I just want to make sure we motioned to open the discussion.
Right. I always forget that. Yes, okay, so, special meetings, I do believe that it is important specifically on a decision like that, that we follow protocol. And though I think, so, we will not have community comments. We will, however, postpone a final version. Perhaps we bring it up at our next board meeting, opening up the possibility for community members to dialogue with the district. Okay?
So, but we need to, we need a motion?
We need a motion, so...
I move that we approve a resolution directing the superintendent to certify the district's compliance with federal anti-discrimination requirements.
Okay, any discussions?
Well, that's, okay.
It's essentially the language written here, which would include Sections 1, 2, 3, 4, 5.
I just read the Title 2.1, the agenda.
Yeah, okay. So, it's been moved and seconded to adopt this resolution. Any...
Amy, did you want to say something? No, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, well, everyone...
Terry, just, Dr. Holden, sorry, explain if we do not certify this?
Yeah, I think, I think maybe I can lay some context. Because some of the context was in the first version of the resolution. So, you know, because we had a work session about it, every district in the country received a Dear Colleague letter from the US Department of Education on February 14th. So, that laid out the current administration's stance on DEI. Last week, so probably April 7, I was at one of my regular update meetings and there was a representative from the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce who said, and these are regional update meetings, so I just happened to be in one of the later ones than an earlier one. And so, folks who had attended prior to the meeting I was in didn't even know this. But, they, that was Monday, April 7. She communicated, and this was Jessica Voltoleini, who is the Chief of Staff for the Ohio Department of Education. She communicated that the feds had directed all state agencies, so the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce, to require all local agencies to sign a certification saying that they did not discriminate or, in other words, they followed the requirements in Title VI or any current, future, and perhaps past, federal funds would be pulled. So, I will tell you that the superintendents in the room were like, wait a minute, what did you just say? And that day, that was when the first date we had was April 10. I'm like, timeout here, people. This is April 7. You want this done by April 10? I said, I have to talk to my board. This is, this is problematic. By the time I got back to the office that day, the Department of Education and Workforce pushed the date to today, April 18, 11:59 PM. Now, I will say that in the interim, the feds pushed their required date to April 24. So, many states are not doing this until April 24 because, and this was all brought about by litigation. So, the fed said, we won't pull any money, we won't do anything until April 24 or after. The Ohio Department of Education and Workforce sent an email, what's today, maybe the beginning of this week, end of last week, probably the beginning of this week, said, it was on last Friday, April 11. Here's all the changes from the feds. Our date is still April 18 at 11:59 PM. Why they are a week early, I don't know, but... So, what I did with our team internally was looked at everything we had, sent all of that to, and by everything I had, our policies, our website, sent it all to legal counsel because, in a word, we do not discriminate, period. The district has had a broad anti-discrimination mission, philosophy. In fact, that's what drew me here. So, once we went through this, we felt pretty confident that, again, I tell you that I have to certify this with everything, but even with everything that we had out there, we felt pretty confident that we don't discriminate. I think a lot of this is a language battle. It's a language battle with the federal government about certain terms that have become misunderstood, misused, hot-button items. But, I feel, let me just say at the outset, I don't want to do the certification because I think it's overreach. But I want you to hear from me that my signing the certification does not cause me to question things because at the heart of the certification is that, do we discriminate based upon Title VI? And the short answer to that is no, we do not. Right? My concern, and I'm glad that the board is doing the resolution directing me to do this, I'm glad that the board is doing the resolution that doesn't give away our right to litigate, is that if we follow the parallels that have been coming from the federal government, there's going to be something else. And so, the deeper we get into that, I think that is when we may, and it may not happen, let me just say that. But should it, I think that's when we get into much more important discussions that, about how these requests that are being, or not request, requirements that are being forced on us intersect with our values. And the danger in not certifying is that our current federal funds could be pulled, our future federal funds could be pulled, and they could do what our legal counsel calls as a crawlback. They could crawl back to years past and say, no, we're taking this money and this money. And I think in a district like ours, that would be hard. So, I think for this certification, and this is the only one I'm talking about, do we follow Title VI? And that's an absolute yes, we do. And so, I can certify this.
If I could, because I also was, you know, I believe that to not certify would be a preferred position. However, I do see that this resolution narrowly defines the certification to only pertain to following Title VI so that as soon as any action happens from the state or federal governments that compel us to act in a way that is discriminatory, such as, you know, Dr. Holden mentioned how this might impact scholarships that are currently offered to our students, to encourage underrepresented populations to go into certain areas, like girls in science, right? Women of color and higher education. You know, all of these areas, if we are being directed to discriminate against those groups, then we have a reason to litigate. If we are being directed to change any of our curriculum, we have a reason to litigate. As soon as there is an action that we are essentially being compelled unjustly to take through the threat of removal of funding, that would be the time for us to step in.
May I, you mentioned scholarships, so I want to clarify something. Scholarships are actually spelled out in the requirements that we not give scholarships to certain groups. We don't, we don't administer our own scholarships. Other organizations administer scholarships. So, that is something we looked at. I think when you are talking about curriculum, that is my, that is my worry. You know, we don't, all of our clubs, all of our athletics, all of our clubs are open to everybody. So, for example, our Gay Street Alliance, does that mean you have to be a gay student to be a member? No. Our United Student Society, does that mean you have to be a student of color to be a member? No. Never has been a requirement, never will be a requirement. And those are the type of, kind of anti-discrimination pieces they are looking at in our operations. And I can absolutely say we do not discriminate in any of those things.
So, they're not saying we can't have those programs? They're saying we can't discriminate with the people that we accept into them?
At this point in time...
Right.
They are saying...
Right.
Right. The groups have to be open.
But the language of this resolution, if I am understanding, allows us to get ready for, to push back if we were preventing the existence of any of those groups.
Correct. Yeah, I read through Harvard's letter to the federal government and, you know, they, they're citing First Amendment violations and privacy violations. Those are the type of things that I think that would raise alarm bells.
Right, and there's an action, the government was threatening an action against Harvard, so that makes sense.
And Harvard being a higher education, institutions of a higher education that is not under the same regulations and we're in K through 12, too.
Right.
I appreciate that this resolution pointed that out is that there's a citation of a higher education case that doesn't pertain to K through 12. You know, that's part of the confusion that, you know, this Dear Colleague letter and subsequent communications have caused. I had a question, and it just, give me just a minute, or someone else go first.
Do you have any, Amy, any questions or thoughts?
Well, you know, I regret that we didn't give a chance for people to make comment on this because, I mean, as you know, it made the paper today, too. I made sure I took the time to read through the Yellow Springs newspaper article and editorial, in fact, on this very issue. So, because I do want to encourage a discussion within the village and with people on this and hope that we will make effort to, you know, as we schedule board work again, to have some thought into statements that we want to make as a district and have the board lead that action, so...
So, that I think could happen at our next regular board meeting. It could be an agenda and we could be open to community comments. What other ways could we get that community impact with regards to a statement?
I think the community can always...
Way in.
Submit communication to the board. The only thing I would say is, I just want to provide a caution. There are very real consequences. We see them right now and I can just imagine what they are as we go further down the line. And I think sometimes, folks in the community don't understand necessarily the very real consequences that are faced. Because in the end, whether it's Yellow Springs or any other district, and I won't name the districts that have chosen not to certify, but we have to think about what are our own very real consequences. And maybe this is a, this is a personal reflection for all of us simply in the times in which we are living. What are we willing to absorb, what can we absorb? But just for, I think, our community doesn't always know what our federal programs provide. And so, you know, it's easy. We, you know, I can type up a piece of paper and tell you exactly what our federal programs provide. That would be, I think, a good part of that. But a concern, again, is, I can tell you what this year, but, and what in the future we might think. But again, remember, there's a crawlback. And then, there's a potential, again, we live in Ohio, so there's the potential of, you know, parallels. Will it happen? I don't know. But what's the parallel if this starts coming, this restriction starts coming and state money is attached to it? And I think districts, smaller districts, bigger districts, we all know this. And it's causing all of us to really think about what we believe and what we can do. And whether a district, I would caution everyone, whether a district certifies or doesn't certify, please do not attach a value judgment to that. You are a good district if you stood up and did not certify and you are a bad district if you did certify. Because in the end, these are services to kids. These are real impacts on staffing, real impacts on community. So, I just want to make sure everybody is aware.
And to add to what you say, but federal grants in particular, they help us provide free and reduced-price lunch and school meals to students that qualify. But they also help fund special education programs and staff.
Reading tutoring?
Reading tutoring.
So, we're talking about...
Full-service service. We're talking about the students that are, you know, some of the most vulnerable in our district. And so, the way that I look at it is that if we do not certify, we are risking the loss of those current fundings that are lifting up students that are the most at risk. And we would do it on principle because in reality, we're already complying to Title VI.
That is correct.
So, then that's, what's the cause? Is that the right moment? Is it the right place to flex our attachment to principle? And what I'm hearing is that they might be, the next steps will be the better moment for this. Especially if we set that up in a way that says, we are committed to Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and we're already complying to that. But should there be... But should there be any further overreach and and dismantlement of what our district's mission is regarding the values of this community, this is where we would act. And that's a part that actually I'm interested in discussing more.
Yes. Yeah, yes, and and I think that's exactly where we stand. That this is a, this is a narrow definition, reasserting how we are certifying following the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four as we have done continually each year with regards to any federal grant or monies that are received. And it is absolutely true that the initial impact on this from the federal government would hit our most vulnerable students. However, I think we're all in solidarity with the the districts that have chosen not to certify. As well as in solidarity with the districts who have and and understand that they need to make the decisions like we do, finding the best strategy forward for their different districts. I think our district is very well positioned to in a unified, with a unified voice, speak out against any injustice that would be that we would be asked to do from the federal or state governments in their implementation of that, of the, of of this condition set in that Dear Colleague letter. And so this is drawing the line, but it's also putting the the next action on them. And it would be that action that we would then sue. Rather than they reta, you know, punishing us for us, our action, which in this case is a failure to act. Does that make sense? So that's, that's the position that's being proposed here.
So you, Dr. Holden and Ms. Winston, you're both representing the present and future of this district. I think we we heard from you that your recommendation is to certify for all the reasons that we have outlined here. What are your recommendations, Ms. Winston?
I would say that I I hear everything that has been said today, and I understand and I agree. I think all of us, if we just were approaching this with our own personal values and lived experiences and our morals, we would say, yes, we don't want to certify. Because I truly believe this is an attempt to cause distractions for one side.
Division.
And division. And I believe it's also an attempt to make people believe that something is happening that is not because we are legally bound to Title VI. And we always certify that, you know, we are not discriminating. So this very public.
Call out.
Yes, this very, this very public and now, you know, talked about so much, it's causing distractions. And that's what they want to happen. Again, if I was speaking personally, I would say, no, don't certify. I am proud and support the districts that that are not. But all districts are so unique. We are small, we are in southwest Ohio. Those districts that are not certifying, they have a larger war chest, right? They have other larger urban districts, they have more numbers, they have more, they have more financial means that they can combine together and litigate it now, if they have to. We, as a community in Yellow Springs, know our morals, know our our values. We know we are not discriminating. So I think here it is, it is okay to certify. And then down the road, if something comes up, then we will probably have other districts that will come and be a part of kind of our war chest and fight with us if it's necessary. But ultimately, I think this is, and this is their way of causing distractions and distractions away from what we really should be focusing on. And that is our children, and I agree with Terry. If they were to pull our federal funds, we are talking about resources for children in our community that need them. And we are also talking about positions who are filled by people who need them and who have family responsibilities. We do not discriminate. We can certify and we can feel comfortable with that. And we can feel comfortable knowing that our community and other districts who are not certifying now will back us moving forward if they ask us to discriminate.
Thank you.
Okay, this is very reassuring, I think, just to feel that I I feel the unity and I see the vision here, which is a relief in this time of uncertainty and chaos out there. Are there any efforts right now that are being done to identify potential partners for?
Terry can speak to that.
Yes, but I don't want to speak about that publicly.
I understand, I just want to make sure that there are some networking being done at that point. And I guess my perspective here is that to prepare for the worst and hope for the best and and stay in that.
And I I think in any statement, we can move, well, I'll ask the board, I I, well, I'll finish my sentence. In any statement that we construct, to address Ms. Winston's comments, to consider that voice of solidarity with other districts could be, or perhaps should be, a part of that statement. So I'd say we capture that. Are we ready to vote on the resolution and then speak about the process of drafting a statement to also address Board Member Magnus's you know, concern and request of of giving community members a chance to provide input?
So we don't have, we didn't have that on the agenda to draft a statement, so I would recommend that we do that at a later board meeting.
It is under the same, it doesn't fall under the same topic of.
We, I think we can do it as a topic, then we won't vote on the resolution until after our discussion about the statement, because they are really.
Appreciate that. Yeah, because I feel like that's just like some guideline clause.
Yes.
Yeah, so we didn't intend to do it.
No, absolutely, so let's consider, I what we would be drafting.
I'd love to have captured a lot of what you said, just.
We have it captured.
Fortunately, we haven't recorded, so, but that's, yeah, that's, I I feel like, so we have statements from Dr. Holden and from Ms. Winston that I think would be really good to capture within that statement.
Yeah, there were some some key words that I took down that that maybe should be made in. It's the idea that that there is a federal overreach and duplicative, and I don't know if it will apply to the next move, but definitely the overreach into our ability to shape our school district to the values of a community. And that just doing that is taking away representation from our voters. And then I think Ms. Winston talked about just the overall attempt to cause destruction and division. And also that we are united in in our solidarity with all of the other districts, regardless of how they they respond and they strategize around this specific request.
Is there a paper from today? There was a word at the end of Megan's editorial that I thought was to the idea that. It's in her editorial, so.
So I think also something to pull out from section, from the resolution.
Well, that we should spell out that we object, we object to the process.
We object to the process. We object to their definition of anti-discrimination.
Yeah.
Which has no basis in law.
Title VI compliance certification and mandate, by the way, that undermines your autonomy as state leaders.
Autonomy, yeah, yeah.
So that undermines your autonomy as state leaders. And then the last part should be, I think, about our desire to find other districts to partner with us.
As part of the solidarity? Or especially a separate point?
I think it should be the last one, that we we invite other school districts that are also feeling that their mission is undermined to.
To unite with us.
To unite with us, yeah.
And then clear language that we will pursue our right. Was it in this section?
But we do, it says that we do not waive any rights.
Right. I think what I'm trying to get get at is a statement that we will defend our right to, and and mission to provide.
Education.
To all students. Which includes. We all know in education, every student comes with a certain set of well, a certain, you know, a unique background, a unique set of needs, a unique set of strengths. We know that kids who are hungry do not learn as effectively as kids who can get a meal. We know that there are indeed disparities between groups of children based on a variety of socioeconomic conditions. We know that our our culture has, is a culture of implicit racism. That gender identities impact like the learning of different students in different ways. Or it is our obligation as educators to attempt to educate all of those students as best as we are able. So any overreach by the federal government that compromises that educational mission must be resisted. Simply, we we must defend our district, we must defend our teachers and our administrators from any attempt to compromise our educational mission. I guess, I guess it's captured. So, and and a mission to provide education to all students, and this will not be compromised.
Are there any other points that? The only thing I can maybe think of is just to specify who who would be most impacted by this if the federal money was taken away? Because I think that's important to point out that you know, it's not that they're going after a certain demographic.
Okay. They're going after children. In the end, this is an adult fight that damages children.
They're politicizing children.
There is a, supposed to be a court ruling today that has not happened yet out of the U S District Court of New Hampshire that I thought might impact this, but there's been no ruling yet.
Is that the S E L U?
Yes, and and the judge there, part of her request of the Trump administration has been to define particularly in this Dear Colleague letter, you say the E I, but define it. And I think yesterday, the attorney, the U S Department of Justice attorney said, the judge noted the federal government has given schools conflicting guidance on what the ban would cover. When she asked for specific examples of what kind of activities could run afoul of prohibitions, the U S Department of Justice attorney said it would be impossible to identify all the scenarios. So I think part of the legal argument is that you you are not, you're just saying this thing without defining it. And so it it opens everything up. And I think, you know, that and the legal argument that the Dear Colleague is based on an affirmative action case with Harvard that has bearing on higher ed, but no bearing on K twelve environments.
Yeah. So we have a a good list to start here, then I I want to make sure that we actually, you know, we act on it. Who would, next steps, two, all the maximum of two board members can work together on a draft.
We've done that before.
Okay.
I mean, your workload is higher now, so it's up to you.
Yeah.
And that's okay, I'm happy to pass it on. Do you want to do it?
Okay.
Whichever way, it doesn't go, if there is a way for me to protect my work time at that point, I will.
Okay, Amy, I'm giving you this list, you'll find a partner. And now let's vote on the resolution.
Bailey?
Yes.
O'Gan?
Yes.
Magnus?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Amy, is there a motion to adjourn?
And who's going to be adjourned?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion adjourned. Thank you, everybody, thanks for a good conversation.